Good evening and welcome to the Pecosin City School Board Special Called Organizational Meeting and Work Session. It's August 20, it's 5:00. And this, the special called organizational meeting is postponed from our July meeting. So this is the time that the board organizes itself. And so I'm going to start the meeting today by opening the floor for the election of the chairperson for the Pecosin City School Board for school year 24-25. So the floor is officially open for nomination for the office of Chair, Pecosin City School Board.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Shannon Martin for the position of Chair of the school board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Would you call roll?
Mr. Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay. Vote passes.
Okay, and I officially turn the meeting over to our newly elected Chair, Ms. Shannon Martin.
Thank you. We now need to elect our Vice Chair, and I would like to make the nomination that Dr. Burbage be our Vice Chair for the year 24-2025, school year. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Carroll, will you please call for the vote?
Mr. Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Ms. Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote is seven ayes, zero nays, vote passes.
Thank you. I think the next one is the designation of the delegate and alternate to the VBSA, 2024 VBS Convention. I believe that will be both Dr. Burbage and myself, per our standing protocol. And I do believe that, Dr. Burbage, you went last year.
Correct.
Anybody is, we don't need to vote on that, right?
You can have a nomination, a nomination, second to, for both at the same time.
Okay. Is there a nomination?
I nominate myself, or Chair Martin and myself, for representatives to the VSBA for the 24-25 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Carroll, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Dr. Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next, we need to discuss the representation to the following boards. And I think the way that we'll do this is we'll talk about who's done what before, who has to do what, and then we'll make one motion for all of those people. We delegate, we divide these up amongst ourselves. I'll let you know who did them last year, and then we can talk about, have discussion about those appointments. Is that okay? The board, okay. So for WHRO, last year was Artie, and the board representative was myself. That is, I don't remember the frequency of meetings.
Yeah, the WHRO, just a little backdrop on that, primarily for new board members, is Pecosin Schools is one of the 2018 regional schools that actually owns WHRO. And so as part of the ownership of that organization, we have a seat on their board annually. And that is the pleasure of the board annually to elect someone to serve on that. They meet every quarter, I believe, quarterly. It's usually at their site in Norfolk, and the meetings are generally in the morning and last about hour and a half-ish. So kind of the background, background for WHRO. In the past, this past year, that board was, Shannon Martin served on the WHRO board.
And I believe in the past, it was, it's been the board chair.
Yes, it's been.
If, I'm happy to continue to serve on the WHRO board unless somebody else desires to do so.
I'm good.
Tim? Good. Okay. All right. For the New Horizons Board of Directors, Tim, you have been our representative. Would you like to continue to be our representative?
We just hired a new executive director. On that, that's, you know, that's our school that we, for CTE education and types of stuff. Other month now, I think, is what they did. First, we were doing it that month, but I blast it to our school.
Absolutely. So I'm hearing the New Horizons Board is open if somebody would like to step in.
I'll do it.
Okay. The School Health Advisory Board, that was me as well last year. I do have a healthcare background, that is part of the reason. But I'm also open to, if somebody else would like to be on the School Health Advisory Board, to giving that seat up to somebody who would be interested in attending those meetings.
I'd be happy to sit on that.
Okay. All right. So Michael? Great. Thank you. Pecosin Education Foundation, I think that, Mr. DeBose, you've been on, as part of that team, so I don't know if you would consider maybe being a rep for us there? That relationship, I don't know, you know, talk about that a little bit, but it's very important.
Yeah, I could just, yeah, I could add a little background to that. Of course, the Pecosin Education Foundation is one of our chief partners. They contribute large sums of money in support for the schools. And Mike DeBose has served on that board for some time as a community representative and before he was on the school board. So he's familiar with the organization and attends the meetings regularly. So, Mike, if you're willing to do that, I think that would be great.
Absolutely.
I know that Judy, who's president of that organization, certainly appreciates you there.
And then we need an alternate for PEF?
I would love to do that, if that is, but again, if anyone else has, I do not have the background that Mike has with that role, if anyone else would.
Great. Thank you, Kristen. All right, so now if we can get a motion to approve the representatives as designated.
We'll do that one separately.
We'll do this one for the boards and then the following for the committees.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
So if we can get a motion for these board appointments.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Carroll, please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote passes seven zero.
Thank you. So it's the same thing for the committees. We have three committees that we need to designate a representative for. They are the Special Education Advisory Committee, the Gifted Education Advisory Committee, and the CTE Advisory Committee. The Special Education Advisory Committee formerly was also me, but I am also open to letting someone else take that if they would like to.
I volunteer for it.
Okay. Gifted Education Advisory Committee was CJ Childress, and we need a new representative for that.
I'll volunteer.
Chris? And then the CTE Advisory Committee formerly was Dr. Burbage? Thank you.
Horizons to?
To ours.
It's ours, yeah.
Okay. That might be beneficial in the long run anyway, Tim. Thank you. All right, so is there a motion for the designation of the representation to the committees as we've discussed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Carroll, would please call for the vote.
Mr. Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote passes seven zero.
Awesome, thank you. Just one comment about the boards. You know, if we're, I think that it's important for us to be, to fulfill our roles in these appointments. If you find that we're having difficulty or we need to make some changes, I think we're, as a board, are open to that. Let's just talk about it to make sure that we have representation so that the staff and students and, you know, know that we're out there to support them. I know I too am not always the best at making everything, but if you're having some trouble, let's talk about it and we can, you know, work it out.
One thing I'd like to just throw out there is I'm unemployed, I'm retired. And I think that everyone else is working, so if you ever need a sub.
Awesome.
I just wanted to throw that out.
Thank you. Thank you. That's a great idea.
Madam Chair, if I could also suggest, and I think the public would appreciate this as well, during our comments, board comments at the end of the meeting, is a great time to do a quick report. If you, if you've been to one of these respective meetings that you all represent, the board on, CTE or Gifted or the SHAB, the Student Health, there's a lot of information that happens in those meetings that the public, unless they attend, and of course, all of these meetings are open to the public always, but if the public has an opportunity to hear a little bit about what's going on in those groups, that's a lot of work that happens on the backside of, of school business that the public's not aware of. I think it would be a great opportunity for you to share out, you know, just a couple of minutes, hey, these are some things we discussed at CTE Committee this past week or what happened. Just a thought.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that reminder. I think that would be a great use of our time, too. Thank you. Okay, I think everybody got the reading file for the capital improvement plan. Artie has prepared an update for us on the CIP.
Yep, and this is just a work session informational conversation about the CIP. We, it is an agenda item on the regular meeting coming up following this work session to, to vote on. This, I know those of you who've been on the board think, what in the world are we doing talking about CIP in August? We got, we were notified the end of the school year, last year in June, that the city needed to move up the deadlines, their deadlines for CIP. Part of their work in planning their capital for the whole city needed to happen earlier than normal. If you recall, last year, we moved it up a month or two, and now it really needs to be moved to the spring so that we can get that information to them early summer, so they can be prepared to actually pass their capital improvement plan for the year in September. So that's why it's hurried this time. We got it out to you as soon as we had completed it. And as you know, over the summer is when we do a lot of the reconnaissance in our schools and buildings to find out what needs to be addressed on CIP. So we will, you know, update that earlier than normal. So that's why it's here. You'll notice that a lot of the things have been on CIP for years, and they get moved around as, as money is available or not available. As well, there's a brief description for these capital projects, but the cost of the capital projects is a moving target, as you well know with your own personal economy. With inflation, the costs change extraordinarily. And so when we go through and update this, this is our best estimate at the time, and as these projects move out over the course of, of the years, those costs increase. As you noticed, just an example of that, the project that was already approved in capital last year to be started 2025 for the HVAC system at the high school was approved, I think at 2.8 million. Am I right, Tracy? And, and then when we revisited that this summer in drafting the new CIP, of course, it's not on the CIP because it's already approved, the costs have gone up about 25%, isn't it? So those costs keep going up, the, the costs keep changing. So on this document, you'll be familiar with several projects, but the costs have changed. So we're asking, of course, to meet the city's deadline to get that approved tonight in items for consideration on the regular agenda. But we're available now for questions, comments, anything anybody wants to talk about on CIP.
This CIP starts in 2026.
So two years.
Right. Well, yes-ish. Not school years.
Right, right. So tennis courts have moved on. I know that's typically, I don't know, is that like a city-school venture there? It's split, and they redid one set and put a pickleball thing over there. I try to play, and they're, they're in pretty bad shape. I mean, I would.
Yeah, there's two sets of tennis courts. We own one set, the city owns the other. So the, the sets of courts closest to us, we have had resurfaced recently, and they would be on our CIP. The work that happens on the other set is, you know, that's city property.
I think that's the Parks and Rec Board, actually, which is where I came from before I came here. So that is on, that is on their purview.
We were doing the work this summer as far as resurfacing the. We're doing the work this summer as far as resurfacing it. I know the public can use the high school ones when they're not.
Yeah, we we welcome the the public to use, you know, our facilities. And I will say this, just on the topic of of tennis courts, because of the being below sea level in parts of Pecosin, and those tennis courts are actually in a wet zone. So part of the problem in the resurfacing that we do, which has a certain amount of cost, what really needs to happen to those courts is they have to be dug up and re-
Elevated.
And elevated. And because what's happening is the the intrusion is coming from underneath. And so we're patching cracks and then and then repainting them. And then a year later, they resurface. So it's a, it's an ongoing challenge with those courts. And the cities are even worse because they're
Closer.
In lower, lower property, yeah, lower land.
So ours are the four that are closest to the high school?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I see that's on the beyond 2030, but I think, I mean, I don't, I haven't been on them, so I can't say.
Is that for resurfacing or is that for what you're talking about?
Well, it's 450,000, so I would imagine it would be
We got, we, that's new courts.
Okay.
Yeah.
And maybe there's a new place we can put new courts. I don't know. I don't know where that would be, but maybe.
My question too was can those things wait until beyond 2030? And looking at the tennis courts, the Bradshaw Field renovation, you know, I know both of those are, I mean, these are state competitive level teams, I mean, at the moment, and I don't see it changing, you know, on either of those sides, softball, tennis, whatever. And both, they're dire needs, I think, in both situations. But, I mean, certainly cannot jump, you know, our HVAC replacements and roof repairs and things like that. But that was my biggest concern is can some of these things that are in the beyond FY 2030, reading the descriptions a long time from now?
It is.
And I don't know what they will look like at that time.
Yeah. That's, that's the challenge with capital improvement. It, and and Pecosin is no different than, you know, pretty much any, anywhere you go, these projects are very costly. And maintaining facilities is a never-ending endeavor. And we always want them, we triage this when we place them on here based on what is the most pressing need. But at any given time, something can happen. Give you an example, the HVAC systems have a lifespan, and we always exceed the lifespan before we ever replace them. And I think every school system does that where I came from. You know, you try to get as much life out of it, and those last years, you're, you're spending some operational funds in the maintenance side, putting Band-Aids on things, keeping things going. But the worst thing you can have is you go one month too long and and a boiler goes out or a chiller goes out in the middle of the school year, and then you've got a catastrophe. So all of that is true. So we've tried to place them in the place that is most strategic based on the needs, immediate needs, knowing that we, all of these are legitimate costs and could happen this year, and it would be a good investment. But the the possibility of that happening is slim to none with financial side of this. And of course, all of this burden goes on the, on the, on the city because they, there's no state funds that come to us for this, with the exception of that 1.5 million we had one time. Of course, that's not, that hasn't appeared back in the budget again for this year. Another thing to think about is part of what happens as we talk to the city, we have a meeting with the city manager tomorrow, actually, to talk through capital improvement, to talk about additional funding that has, that we received over the summer when the final budget was passed, and carryover funds that we have every year, which is generally from vacancy savings. We're going to have that conversation, start that conversation tomorrow. And as you all are used to, in after the the audit is done in October completed, we generally then write a request to the city after we meet to decide what our list of things we'd like to to ask the city to return that money to us for additional projects. Some of those projects will undoubtedly be to offset some of the cost on capital improvement. Does that make sense? That was kind of a convoluted description, but capital improvement are one-time expenditures, and we can't use carryover funds for operational things because generally those things repeat salaries and such. You wouldn't use carryover funds for those generally. So all legitimate points. And if you see something on here that you feel like we should talk about moving up, we can certainly have the conversation. But but our staff has gone through here and and put them in the place that we think is most pressing.
Just to clarify, you have division-wide asphalt repairs, and then you also have at the high school asphalt repairs in the student parking lot. Those are separate, right?
They are separate, yeah. The the student parking lot is, is, has a immediate need to to get that that lot resurfaced. Now, we patch some things and paint some things, and we put some paint on there last year with stripes. Those help, but there's some significant cracking in that parking lot.
The recent issue with the middle school gym, is that kind of just a Band-Aid and the $800,000 is for a big thing?
No, this is, there's good news for the middle school gym, and that will be in Mr. Roberts' report in in our regular meeting. But the the quick and dirty on it is we had a leak over spring break last year, and I think Dr. Ratliff reported on that. And it actually damaged the court such that it could not be repaired due to the moisture. So the good news about that, that's a terrible awful thing, but the good news is we were completely covered with insurance. So we now have about $130,000 brand-new floor that will, is, has just been completed. We're waiting for the final coats to dry. He'll, and he'll give you a full report with pictures on that. It is a beautiful court. So that we have taken off of CIP because no longer do we need to repair that. We have a brand-new court.
But the roof, what about the roof?
Oh, the roof at
I didn't know the 800 down at the roof.
Yeah, the roof, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, we don't want the roof to cause any damage to that brand-new floor. Very, very good point.
Don't forget that the leak was a sprinkler pipe.
It was. It wasn't a roof leak, yeah. And it was damaged not because of of a fault in the sprinkler pipe system in any way. It was a new HVAC system. You'll recall that they installed in the renovation the wrong system. They came back and put in the right system, and in the install, poked a hole in our, in our sprinkler system and flooded. And I say flooded, I mean flooded that that court. So I see where you're going, Tim. It's, we don't want to neglect that roof that would cause, right now, that roof is not leaking. It just, it's time. Yeah, knock on wood.
I, I think the question is because it's in the 2027 for 800,000, so it'll stay there. But I, I mean, I don't know if the question is, is that going to be sufficient funds?
No, no. I mean, I, I just knew that there was an issue with the middle school. I didn't know if we were Band-Aiding it and trying to do it all two years from now and right now.
Right.
But if it's the floor finished and everything else, and it's just the roof is good for another two years.
Yeah. And that, that, from my understanding, and Andrew, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that roof needs to be replaced, but it's not right now causing any, any issues.
Maybe put some coatings on it at some point. And you know, it hasn't made sense. Knock on wood. But yeah, that's what I was worried.
And all of that was in the original plan for the renovation of the middle school. Some of you who were around at the time may remember that. And, you know, before I got here, that was value-added out. So the gym wasn't touched or the the kitchen area. So that were things that, you know, hindsight probably should have been renovated at the same time that the building was renovated.
I saw it on Friday, and it's going to look fabulous when it's done.
The other thing is the bus replacement. We, you know, we'll do that by year. So we have continual.
Talked about that.
Are we just getting into the replacement cycle where we don't need to do two every year? Or we're just backing down to one every year?
Exactly. We have finally caught up. We, since I've been here, we've purchased six, I think, six, maybe seven, either of you know, new buses. And the, so we're kind of caught up to the lifespan of our buses. And so we will be on a regular one-bus every year replacement as we phase out buses on a normal schedule versus catch-up. No question.
Maybe there's room to bring some of these things over from beyond 2030 if needed into the 2029. You know, if you look at the totals, you can see things come up.
If it's a capital improvement, but did anybody give us a dollar for
Not yet. We're, we're waiting. They are still on surplus, and we're, we're hopeful that somebody
Keep saying he wants, we should buy one. It's a good investment. I'm like, eh, they want to sell them all at one time.
We do believe generally that what happens is somebody gets in the same situation we're in, and they need large numbers of trailers. So it's not uncommon to to have a group purchase like that. But we'll sell them one at a time. We have to take them out of there one at a time because of the way they're facing.
Thank you for that question. I was curious myself.
Yeah.
What, what happens, I mean, in the unfortunate event that we, nobody does want?
Start a paintball company?
Okay. All right. Do a little demo demolition and make it a paintball.
Building exercises?
Simulation. So we will, this will come on our agenda tonight for approval. Any other questions about the CIP? Okay. Then I guess we will adjourn for 30 minutes, and we will resume our meeting Okay, then I guess we will adjourn for 30 minutes and we will resume our meeting at 6:00 PM.
All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the August 20th Pacoson City School Board Meeting.
Please rise.
I'm going to do the pledge and the moment of silence today. Our student rep AJ is finishing out his summer, and we wish him forward to seeing him in September. So please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to a land for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Moment of silence? Thank you, everybody. I'll save the quotes for AJ. Ms. Carroll, are there any additions or modifications to the agenda?
No additions.
Thank you. Ms. Purdy, do we have any recognitions today?
No, we do not.
We do not. Thank you. All right, so that will take us right to our instructional update with Ms. Eide. I would like to say welcome to the team. We're glad you're here.
Thank you. Okay, good evening. Chair Martin, Vice Chair Burbidge, and distinguished board members. I'm pleased to be here tonight for my first school board meeting. And I have the privilege of presenting some instructional updates and some celebrations from the summer. Starting with our new teacher orientation, our new staff orientation week was an exceptional start for our incoming educators, offering a blend of professional preparation and community engagement. Throughout the week, new staff members were introduced to their colleagues, connected with technology, and enjoyed a bus tour of the city, which I also was able to attend. And they also enjoyed the town's museum, garden, and our favorite, the ice cream social at Beans Ice Cream. The Pacoson Kiwanis group graciously hosted a warm welcome event, making our new educators feel at home. And this week was not only about equipping our staff with tools they needed, but fostering a strong sense of community and belonging. And I do believe we were successful. Our new hires also received comprehensive professional development designed to set them up for success on day one. The training covered critical areas, starting with an in-depth introduction to our new teacher induction program, our key learning management platforms such as Power School and Canvas. In addition, specialized training was provided on special education, equipping our educators with the knowledge and skills necessary to meet the diverse needs of all of our students. Our commitment to safety and communication was reinforced through CPR certifications and training on Parent Square, Vector, and the Educator's Handbook. With the return of our entire staff, various trainings and professional development opportunities occurred through each school. This thorough professional development has laid a strong foundation for our new educators, empowering them to thrive in their roles and contribute meaningfully to our school division. Anne Spark, we are excited to share that we had over 300 attendees from across the school community. Saw many of you there as well. This event was designed to provide tailored professional development opportunities that meet the unique needs of all of our staff. There was 47 choice sessions, allowing attendees to select the training that best aligned with their roles and professional growth goals. These sessions covered a wide range of topics, ensuring that everyone from teachers, paraprofessionals, registrars, bus drivers, administrators, counselors, and administrative assistants had relevant professional learning opportunities. This inclusive approach highlights our commitment to supporting every staff member in our educational community. We want to thank Ms. Kelly Purdy for arranging such a wonderful opportunity for our staff. I know from me seeing members from across the community and interacting directly in professional learning was a very enriching experience. So... Hopefully I don't click too much and too fast. This slide just highlights some of the sessions that were offered to our staff. We definitely look forward to next year as we continue to plan and seek out engaging professional learning opportunities for all. All right, so moving on to our preliminary and unofficial performance data. We do know the accreditation and accountability information was released earlier today from the Virginia Department of Education. We look forward to providing a more thorough report on the results during our September board meeting, but for now, I'm pleased to share these updates. All of PCPS schools will be fully accredited. Pacoson Elementary School went from 18% to 9% in regards to chronic absenteeism, a reduction of 9%, which is significant. Pacoson Middle School went from 14% to 7% in regards to chronic absenteeism, a reduction of 7%. Our geometry pass rates went from 79% to 96%, so a 17% increase. And of course, we know that in science, we maintain one of the highest in our area. Pacoson Middle School had a 91% pass rate. So again, as it was highlighted earlier, we are top in the region again, followed by York County and Virginia Beach in the area of science. So again, this data is preliminary and unofficial. These preliminary results indicate that we are performing similarly to the '22-'23 school year. Notably, we observed a reduction in chronic absenteeism across the board, decreasing from 14% to 11%. With the official results released by the VDOE earlier today, which have, we are, have been informed, it does not include growth on those, so we will come back to you with those measures. We're eager to dive deeper into the data once it's final and complete. We will collaborate closely with our school-based teams to ensure that every student's needs are met and continue to progress towards achieving the goals outlined in our strategic plan. We would be remiss if we did not express our heartfelt thanks to the dedicated staff of PCPS for their unwavering commitment to our students' success. From school administrators, support personnel, office staff, and especially our teachers, we truly appreciate all that they do for our young people. Moving on to the Summer Academy, I'm pleased to share with you the highlights of our Summer Academy, which was held July 1st through the 25th. This summer, we welcomed 120 students from kindergarten through 8th grade with an impressive average daily attendance of 94 students. Our primary focus on academic growth, particularly in math and literacy. And each day, students engaged in activities designed to strengthen their skills in these critical areas, ensuring they continued to build a strong foundation for the coming school year. In addition to academics, we were fortunate to have the Pacoson Library play a significant role in our program. Weekly visits from the library allowed students to dive into reading sessions, sparking their imaginations and reinforcing their literacy skills in a fun and engaging way. This year, we incorporated the Olympic theme throughout the program. The theme wasn't just about the physical activities, it was woven into our academic lessons as well. Students explored Olympic facts, learned about important character traits, and embraced the spirit of Olympics in everything they did. To conclude the summer program, we hosted the PCPS Summer Academy Olympic Games. This final celebration was a true highlight for our students. They participated in a series of events that not only tested their knowledge, but also celebrated their hard work and enthusiasm. Our Summer Academy would not have been possible without the hard work of the PCPS teachers and staff who dedicated their time and creativity. We would like to thank our Summer Academy Coordinator, Ms. Kristen Lamb, and intern, Ms. Dara Libby. We would also like to thank Mr. Brett Higginbotham for his work with high school students in credit recovery. Moving on to the Virginia Literacy Act. As you know, our division has been diligently preparing for the full implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. This important legislation ensures that every student receives explicit instruction using an evidence-based literacy program grounded in the science of reading and supported by high-quality instructional materials. I'm pleased to inform you that our comprehensive Division Literacy Plan has been approved by the VDOE. And with this approval, our teachers are set to implement the state-approved, high-quality materials from HMH. Additionally, they will engage in rigorous professional development to further enhance their instructional practices and monitor student progress throughout the school year. We will continue to seek feedback from our instructional staff and make adjustments as needed to ensure our students receive the best possible literacy education. Moving on to one of my favorite parts is the curriculum development that happened this summer. Starting with math, we are still awaiting the release of the approved math textbook list from the state. In the meantime, though, our teachers and curriculum teams have been proactive in designing units of study that align with our current standards and best practices. For example, in grades kindergarten through 5th grade, we developed units of study, between 9 and 15 units of study, depending on the grade level and the content, which each of those units having 2 to 4 weeks of lesson plans within them. In English Language Arts, we have made substantial progress. For kindergarten, we have developed nine units, each containing four weeks of lesson plans. For grades 1 through 5, we have 10 units each with three weeks of lesson plans inside of each of those units. This structure is designed to provide a consistent and comprehensive approach to literacy instruction across all grade levels. In Science and Social Studies, we are currently still using the previous standards, but we are preparing for a full transition to the new standards in the coming school year. This will be a significant shift, and our teams are working diligently to ensure the transition is smooth and our instructional materials are aligned. What we believe is most valuable from the summer's efforts, though, is the knowledge and familiarity with the curriculum our writers have gained with the high-quality instructional materials, particularly HMH. They are all now well-positioned to lead their teams during the school year. We will continue to monitor the use of these materials, gather feedback from our instructional staff, and make adjustments as needed to ensure the curriculum remains both effective and responsive to our students' needs. And we want to thank you for your continued support as we strive to provide the best possible educational experience for our students. This is a lot of teachers here, but these teachers worked on the curriculum, both in math and literacy and all of what I just shared with you, the units and the lesson plans. Ms. Richardson, Ms. Bowman, Ms. Dixon, Ms. Griffin, Ms. Alcock, Ms. Adams, Ms. Green, Ms. Alves, Ms. Flynn, Ms. Lamb, Ms. Haskins, Ms. Freeman, Ms. Turenti, Ms. Thompson, Ms. Turner, Ms. Chouse, Ms. Edwards, Ms. George, Ms. Carr, and Ms. Clancy. This group of dedicated teachers was led by Ms. Dara Libby for literacy and Ms. Katie Johnson for math, and also Ms. Jen Canello overseeing the curriculum projects as well. I'm so proud of the work that they've done. You know, in my previous role, curriculum writing was one of my main focuses, and they really accomplished a lot in the time span that they had to do this. And I look forward to working with this talented group as we continue to build our curriculum. So ending with the money, always the fun part. We are thrilled to announce that Pacoson City Public Schools has been selected by the Wallace Foundation to receive a $50,000 grant aimed at fostering and researching leadership development in rural communities. The Wallace Foundation looks to research and foster actions that can strengthen school leadership and works in sync with our strategic plan and our vision. This can include providing building administration-on-the-job support based on the person and the school. And this generous funding will enable us to continue our school, supporting our school administrators as they participate in CERN, Leadership Institute at William &amp; Mary. Additionally, we are excited to explore further leadership development opportunities made possible by this grant, ensuring our leaders have the best resources to grow and excel in their profession. This initiative aligns perfectly with our strategic plan objective of retaining high-quality staff. And this is just a calendar looking forward, so what we're pleased to do next in September or October, once the VDOE has finalized their data, is to share a more comprehensive look at the accreditation and accountability data with you.
That's all for me. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Vince, financial update?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the school board. For the finance report this evening, I'll be providing a fiscal year '25 budget update as well as reviewing upcoming local and state financial reporting, which is required of the school district. PCPS approved its fiscal year '25 budget last March, based on the governor's recommended budget. Subsequent to its adoption, the General Assembly and the governor came to an agreement on a new budget. In late May, the schools received its final state budget calculation for fiscal year '25. PCPS received a net increase of a little over $560,000 in state revenues. In September, staff will provide expenditure budget recommendations for these additional funds, along with the fiscal year '24 carryover request the superintendent referenced earlier. In order to timely inform the board on the school's financial health, monthly financial reports are provided each month in your board package. In addition, the schools receive an annual financial audit from its independent auditors, Brown &amp; Edwards. This audit involves testing of revenue, expenditures, payroll, procurement activities, fixed assets, and federal grants, as well as the individual school's activity funds. The school's activity fund's audit work has been completed, and the audit report is in process. Interim work has been completed for the financial audit of the school's records, and the auditors will be onsite for completion of their audit work for the first two weeks in September. For state financial reporting, they also require what is termed an annual school financial report, which is due in mid-September, and reflects revenues and expenditures reported in a very prescribed format, which differs from what we report for the school's audit. The totals are the same, but the way it's counted for each category is different. It involves noncategories, its instructional, administration, attendance and health, transportation, food service, operations, facilities, technology, debt service, and contingency. The instructional category includes subcategories identified as general instruction, media services, guidance services, Office of the Principals, gifted, and remedial instruction. The instructional subcategories are further defined and reported by elementary and secondary expenditures. The elementary category includes expenditures related to grades K through 7, and the secondary category includes expenditures related to grades 8 through 12. There's also additional state reporting required for special ed, as well as the average teacher salary report. The information from the annual school report is calculated for all school divisions, combined, and reported to the General Assembly. And our future state funding, a lot of times, is based on that report. Have you any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, operational update?
All right, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Tillitt, staff, and community. Like she said, I'm Andrew Roberts. I'm the new Assistant Superintendent of Operations, and it's my pleasure to provide your report on operations to start the year. So just want to give a quick update on our human resource situation. I'm very pleased to report that right now, we have got all of our classes and course sections filled. So starting day one, we're good to go with all the different grade levels coming back in. This process really started back before spring break with our hiring process. So kudos to all the administrators in our Human Resources Department to get these things filled with that span of time, all the interviews, request the hires, and all the processes that you have to do to do that. So thank you very much. We are definitely better off than we were last year. We only had 25 teaching positions to replace compared to the 41 the year previous. On the staff side, 23 compared to the 18, so overall, our total was much less this year than it was the year previous. So was really good shape there as far as those numbers. All right, our summer safety updates. We have some annual things we have to do each year for the Department of Criminal Justice Systems and the state. Two of those things are the safety audit and the crisis plan. We've successfully created or developed and created all of our school and division safety safety audits and crisis plans. We will be developing or actually adopting the new template that DCGS released for their crisis plan. We can move forward with the one that we're currently using. It's basically just some formatting things and expands on some sections that, you know, we find important, so we'll get great benefit as we develop that new crisis plan template. Continuing on with the safety, the emergency drill schedules are all scheduled for all buildings, including the bus evacuation drills. PPS had an upgraded fire alarm system installed completed, which is a huge advantage. I know that the other one was kind of antiquated, and this one is digital and nice, so that should be a huge safety upgrade. All the playgrounds have been inspected and the concerns noted, and we're starting to address those. Special thanks to Keith Fai-- or, yeah, Mr. Fai for inspecting those again for us this year. He's done that for the past, I think, two or three years now. Definitely a great partner that we have there. All SROs are assigned to the buildings, and we do now have three SSOs in PES, PMS, and PHS, and we're currently working on that fourth school security officer to be at the primary school, so hopefully we'll have that one filled very soon. Certain PCPS staff and all the SSOs attended the annual DCGS safety forum. We attended a variety of sessions, ranging from active shooter to threat assessments, just all safety-related. I was really proud that all the SSOs showed because it really could show them their role within the building and kind of give them a broader horizon, the house of schools work with the law enforcement. Fortunately, all of our SSOs were previous law enforcement police officers, so they know that side of the house, but bringing them into the school is a little different. So, definitely some eye-opening stuff for them, very beneficial. All right, so the fun stuff, right? The facilities. So, these are only highlights, I want to mention that. There's way more that happened that's not on this screen, and I first want to recognize and thank our five guys that do our maintenance work. Not only did they, you know, either coordinate or, you know, do these certain things, but they're also at the same time keeping up with our regular maintenance, any repairs that are reported, and as any educator knows, those first couple of weeks that the teachers are back, those work orders just keep flooding in. I mean, these guys are knocking out hundreds of work orders and doing a phenomenal job as they do it. So, starting off with the primary school, the pavilion, if you've not seen it, take a drive, go look at it, it's up and ready. It's very beautiful, and a special thank you to Roxy Overbee and the PTO there to make that possible. Very thankful for that group getting that going. We're also doing some restroom stall upgrades in that building. I think we have two of the four that will slate it to be renovated complete. The other two will happen as we have-- find time to do so in the next couple of weeks. But the first two are complete, so all they need is the cleaning, and they're ready to go. We did replace all the sidewalks, starting at Odd Road, all the way around the turnaround loop and in front of the flagpole at the primary school as well, if you've not seen that. That was really becoming a safety issue or trip hazards and just starting to look really, really bad, so fortunate enough to be able to replace all that. It's a very walkable space now, and it definitely enhances the appeal going into the building there. Onto the elementary school. Interior painting, a lot of the columns, handrails, things of that nature are being painted. The air handler units being repaired was a big plus. The gym floor did get its annual recoding, not refinish it, but recoding, and then the new playground is being installed as we speak. I do have some pictures here in a second to share with you on that project, which is very exciting. As mentioned in the work session, the PMS gym floor is something I'm very, very jealous of, being in the high school for the past six years. Not only did we get a new gym floor because of some damages caused by a vendor, the insurance is paying for that, but we also upgraded the space by painting a lot of the stuff that you'll see in the picture. All the walls, all the ductwork and the ceilings and the support beams that are kind of like C-brackets that hold up the roof are all painted, and they look, you know, just fantastic. Like I said, I'm very jealous that that was not my space, and it's hers. And then the football fence, we moved it closer to the field just to provide us some opportunities for some ample parking. You know, we're always looking for ways to get more parking and definitely handicap parking in that facility. And also, we'll branch us some or give us some opportunity to do some other things once we get down the line on the CIP items that you can see there with the wrestling rooms and things of that nature, just having that fence a little closer to the field and having that field space to work with. So, we'll discuss that as we go along. At Picocin High School, the BNC classrooms all got a fresh coat of paint, they look great with the gray color. The commons and cafeteria restrooms are also painted. Within the commons, if you've ever been in those restrooms, they had the old stone dividers that were starting to lose their appeal, I'll put it that way. They also got a fresh coat of paint with some epoxy, so that should be durable, and I was really pleased with the patterns Dr. Winchester and her group picked out because it matches the sinks and everything, so it looks really nice in there, and I do have pictures of that. The weight room equipment that we've been waiting to get installed finally did this summer. I have pictures of that, it looks great and is being used. And then the cafeteria restroom stall upgrades are complete as well today. And then some of the spaces got some new carpet that needed it, and I put the greenhouse there. This is a project we actually completed back in the spring before summer actually hit, but I just wanted to kind of note that, that those are now functioning and on campus, they're on concrete slabs. Our guys did amazing work with that, and we'll be able to grow plants now in our bonding classes year-round, so that's definitely a highlight. All right, good pictures here. So, to the left, of course, is the pavilion at the primary school, and right is the construction currently. I think I took that a couple of days ago at the elementary school, so both very exciting spaces and can't wait to see people starting to utilize them. Here is the gorgeous PMS gym floor. The picture to the left is when it was just the wood, which makes that space look super huge. And then to the right is the court as it stands now with all the lines for both the main court and the two-court systems that we've had, that we let Parks and Recs use, and of course, the high schools for practices and the PE classes at the middle school. Notice the rafters, the supports, all the paint that's going in. If you do get a chance, just not within the next seven to 10 days because the floor is curing, but do take a journey over there to see that, you will be impressed. And for the high school, this is some of the weight equipment. If you know anything about weight equipment, this is the standard setup. We're trying to catch up to speed our weight room to give our athletes and our PE classes a chance to see, you know, some real equipment and to really work out. Those are beautiful machines, and we also put that wall graphic that represents all of the sports that we participate in, and then that picture to the right is definitely the restrooms with the new paint in the commons area. Very pleased with that project. All right, back to tech, sorry, no more pictures. Important stuff, though, technology updates. Again, our small crew of IT led by Josh Montalvo have installed all these things that are listed here. I mean, it's anything from taking existing cameras and reposition it to increase our safety and our surveillance, to installing new cameras in a lot of different locations in all four buildings. They've replaced 20 projection-- projectors across all the buildings in the division. They added an additional badge reader door to door eight to the high school, which is the door we actually use every morning and afternoon for the pickup and drop-off loop, which is a huge thing because before, we've had to have a two-staff system, one to stand at the door and one to, you know, kind of just watch the kids come up, but now we can do it all in one. New upgraded speakers and PHS as well. We upgraded that PA system that was very antiquated a couple of years back, but the paper cone speakers really did not handle the volume that the system was capable of, so Mr. Montalvo is strategically replacing those as he can. Grants submitted for additional safety equipment, definitely repaired a lot of Chromebooks that were damaged at the end of the year, and then we're continuing our replacement cycle with that, replacing 300 Chromebooks, 50 iPads, and 50 staff laptops according to that plan this year. They reworked some audio cables in a lot of our bigger, larger spaces like the forum, and then added the hanging mics to the PMS stage, which every school utilizes. All right, so, transportation updates. We do have routes finalized, our drivers have those assigned. They participated in Spark Day with one of their two annual trainings that are required during that time. They were excited, you know, want to give a huge shout-out to them. We only have 11 returning, so we're pretty, pretty bad off there. We need more drivers, to be honest. If you know anyone who even is considering that, we do help train, we do help get them certified quickly, and we'll definitely find a route for them to cover. But we do need more drivers, but the drivers we have, tremendous people, they're hard-working. The only thing that I ask is those first few days, first few weeks, give them some patience as they work through these routes because we have had to condense some runs, which can add a little bit of time. All our runs still are under an hour, well under an hour, but still, it will be a little bit different because of we only have 11 drivers to fulfill these runs now. So, again, selfless plug, if you know anyone, call us.
How many total would we like to have?
We typically operate around 14 or 15 drivers, so, you know, we need at least, you know, three more to get us back to kind of where we were to be comfortable and have an opportunity for a sub-driver, so, you know, that's, that's very important. All right, food services. I did include a chart here. Anything highlighted in yellow is an increased meal price. The breakfast meal prices went up five cents, and then the lunches went up 10 cents except at the high school. Reason for the increase is in the prices of meals, of course, with everything, everything else is going up, so, you know, we have to figure out how to absorb that cost, and Airmark, our vendor, you know, helped us research, you know, the divisions around us and being comparative, so we're definitely not, you know, out of line with this, and our increases are much smaller than most divisions in the surrounding areas. Another thing that I want to mention about Airmark, they want us to partner with them in their allergen program. It's called the School Allergen Readiness Plan, which basically takes our nurses, our administrators, cafeteria monitors, anyone who would have an active role in food services daily to help protect our students from allergens. And those are the known ones, like the ones that, you know, require the 504s, and the ones that just unexpectedly happens, and then our emergency response plans have to be enacted. So, this plan, I like it because it's nothing new to us, it's stuff we already do, but it organizes it and it makes that partnership between us and Airmark, so it's seamless on how we respond to emergencies and knowing who should have the 504 access and who shouldn't and so on to make sure that our kids are safe in that cafeteria. And we will be meeting in September to discuss that more. All right, on to the CIP, the Capitol Improvement Plan. In the work session, we're exposed to a lot of this, but the timeline really moved up on us by the city's request. We usually do this in the fall. You know, we had to look at what we already had, those quotes were, you know, a couple to three years old, so we went back and got those reestimated, and surprise, surprise, things increased. You know, we give the example earlier that the HVAC system increased, you know, almost approximately 25% in those two years for the same work. So, we reorganized things, we added some new things, especially to the 20, 30, and beyond section that we just see the need for, and, you know, we're hoping to get this approved, to get it to the city, who's always been super gracious, we're always grateful for all they do for us, to see where they put it and see what they can do to help with these years. All these things, you know, I tell people, I would love to put it all in year 2026, but we have to be, you know, good stewards and respectful of the city and, you know, where they need those to fit. So, excited to see when they, they get back with us because these are all good things that are huge needs. All right, student conduct, really quick. We just updated the normal stuff, calendar updates, we had the board member information updated in there, and then the state discipline codes that the state sends out. I think there was only one under the threat section where they're making it delineate between spoken and written, was the only huge change there. And then we add the two sections that you guys discussed back in the November board meeting, and that was putting in their sections about disciplining students with disabilities. It's the same information parents would receive in the various bed meetings that they would be attending about their rights and responsibilities, and then that teacher response to manage student behavior section was added in there as well, and I think we modeled that off of some neighboring divisions as well to get the, get that right. So, that was all in, I think, the November board meeting. All right, so who has heard of the Executive Order 33 for cell phones? I know this has been a hot button. Just to, you know, kind of put it in a nutshell here, it was, you know, ordered by Governor Youngkin that charged VDOE with defining what a cellphone-free education means and provide guidance to help school divisions to adopt to remove cell phones from instructional time for all K-12 public schools. Superintendent Tillit and I attended one of the, basically, feedback section, sessions that the VDOE put on in Virginia Beach, and in that meeting, it was pretty much discussed that, you know, we're looking at age appropriateness, we're trying to get feedback, and then, you know, they announced that by September 16th, VDOE will release that guidance. It's not going to be a model policy, you know, not a blanket thing for everybody to follow, but saying, hey, here are best practices, this is the model guidelines that you need to follow to create, adopt, modify your current, you know, practices, to adhere to that Order 33 prior to the January 1st date where that will be due and have to be enforced. So, you know, some key dates there, September 16th, we'll get the guidance from VDOE, and we'll have to enact the policy by January 1, 2025. All right, and that's all I have, so if you have any questions, please feel free.
I have a quick question, first slide, so it was a long time ago, but--
Yeah.
--the class, and, you know, you said all the class and course sections are filled with teachers. Do you know how many are either licensed or are long-term subs at this point, and are we going to try to replace that with the process?
Right, yes. Any of the interim teachers that we have, of course, will, you know, be looking to still hire or fill those. We have very few of those, you know, probably, you know, around the area, one at least, you know, as far as the other divisions are concerned. You know, we do have other unfilled positions, I think five, and there are anything from like the counselor, some bus drivers, of course, that's in those figures, but, you know, we're sitting in a really good spot with some really good certified teachers for all the classes and course sections that we have.
Can you explain the provisional license? There's no funding that we provide to meet that licensing requirement, correct? It's just an allowance of time? Is that how that works?
It's a three-year period, yeah.
Three-year period?
Yep.
And then that's tracked by the system and, but it is at the, the teacher's expense to fulfill that on their own?
Sure, yes.
Okay.
Good question. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Carroll, is there any public comment?
No follow-up comments.
Anybody signed up?
No one signed up for reading comments.
Thank you. Dr. Burbage, consent agenda?
Okay, tonight's consent agenda consists of approval of financial reports, authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with attached request, approval of personnel action, approval of minutes for June's regular meeting, approval to dispose of surplus property.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, discussion about the consent agenda? Ms. Carroll, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Dubose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin? Vote passes 7-0.
Thank you. For other matters for consideration, is there a motion for consideration of approval of the second reading of the changes to the policy manual?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If you'll remember, this is carryover from June. Ms. Carroll, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Dubose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote passes 7-0.
Thank you. Consideration of the policy update for policy 3-2.1, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Carroll, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Dubose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote passes 7-0.
Thank you. Consideration of motion to approve changes in hiring requirements for substitute teachers, policy 5-2.7, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation, discussion?
I had some, some input on-- I mean, I-- I mean, I get why we're trying to open up substitutes are hard to find, but we are in a spot where you are using long-term substitutes sometimes still. And I don't feel that the policy, I think it opens the door to allow somebody with even less education to be fully in charge of somebody for nine weeks, 18 weeks, or whatever it is. So, I don't know if there's a way we can say, you know, we could hire this pool of candidates for no more than five days and then another pool, you know, the 90, the ones you find that are close, we can save them for anytime, like long-term or maternity leave or something like that. Cause I think if you open it up, it could be like your, your finishing returns on your, your teacher performance.
Yeah, I can address that. Um, we have two different kinds of substitutes. The substitute list is for all substitutes, but we have substitutes that we only use for long-term service. And those are substitutes who have bachelor's degrees minimum. And most of those folks, with very few exceptions, have significant experience in working with children. So, we're very careful from an administrative side of that, for all those reasons you mentioned, Dr. Goodell. We would only use a long-term sub who's somebody who's qualified to be doing that job. We have very few of those in Pecosin, thankfully. We, most of our staff, the vast majority of our staff is not only highly qualified, but fully licensed. So, um, it's, it's not a concern from an administrative standpoint. And all we're doing with this is kind of emulating what we're finding around us, cause we're competing against our, um, other neighboring school divisions for a cadre of, of substitutes to come in, again, for only short-term substitute assignments.
We have 90 days on here that they're, they can, uh, substitute teacher may not feel particularly teaching big enough for longer than 90 teaching days. That they can only sub first 90 times or they can't do 90 consecutive days?
90 consecutive days.
So, I, I, 90 days with somebody in this pool would concern me as a, a parent.
And, um,
I don't, I mean, I don't know if we can, you know, knock down the day, I mean, cause if we're using long-term subs anyway, what's the difference if we have 90 on there or five? Number we want to pick as far as somebody with only two years of college can be in charge of a instructional classroom.
Um, the only thing I would caution you about, you know, again, we're going to put the most qualified person in the classroom. There has to be some, some level of trust of that, on that. But in addition, um, we have to have a, an adult in a classroom. So, um, if we hem ourselves up in a, in a policy where we get in an urgent situation where we need someone in a classroom and the policy says you can only be there for five days consecutive, um, what are alternatives? We, we have not, since I've been here, been in a situation like that where we would go to a person who is not highly qualified to be in a long-term situation. But there would be, there could be a situation where you would have to have an adult in the classroom for, for longer than five days, if, if that's what you're glittering.
I think it's a valid point. 90 is a lot of days. Um, I, I'm not sure, again, if that's the norm or if there is more of a middle ground. But I, I do have to agree, Dr. Goodell. I think that is, that's a long time.
This, this description doesn't reflect two different sublists that you mentioned.
Right.
Should it?
Well, it could. I mean, we have a, a, a sublist that we go to. When we assign a long-term substitute, we're actually, and it's a different language, we're actually using them as an interim teacher. And they're very distinct services we're asking for. A substitute generally is, is, is using a lesson plan provided by a teacher who's out temporarily. A interim teacher, or what we affectionately call long-term substitutes, are there providing the instruction for the class. They're making lesson plans now that, all of our teachers work collaboratively. It's a, 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 a point that you, um, you need to consider, is that they work in teams. So, the lesson plans are collaboratively designed. But, um, it, it is a valid point that we don't want anybody in a classroom for any length of time that's not qualified to lead that classroom instructionally. And, um, we work, work very hard to make sure that, that's the case. The substitute list is one list, but our administrators place those substitutes in, if it's going to be in, in a, in a time more than short term. I would be cautious about delineating between five days or seven days or two days. Again, our subs, our administrators are, are very intentional about who they place in those classrooms. But, but the long-term subs, folks that are going to be in there for any longer term are, from my view, they're seen as interim teachers because they are actually providing instruction.
Don't we have a time period in which they move from substitute pay to, um, basically time teacher pay?
Yes, and we, that's generally a semester, but we have expedited that, um, uh, this year. The state has authorized a new licensure process. Actually, it was, um, it's, you noticed the one sentence in the policies you just passed. It alludes to that. It's called a local license. In the national educator shortage, the Department of Education has, uh, lobbied the General Assembly to authorize a superintendent's approved local license for a temporary period of time. Now, there are requirements in that. They have to have a bachelor's degree. There's, these are, um, educated folks who are, um, interested in serving as, as interim teachers and can get a temporary license for up to a year. But these people, um, generally have had significant work with children, not just two folks off the street. We're certainly, this is a local policy, so we're certainly able to, to finesse this. If you all want to look at different language, but what we did was copy, um, around us, what other school divisions were doing so we could be more competitive in recruiting primarily short-term substitutes.
So, relating to the policy itself, as it reads currently, there are two sections, well, there's a section for substitute teachers and then there's a section that says licensing contract issues. I'm assuming, based on the way that the reading file reads, we're replacing the first paragraph, which is for substitute teachers itself.
That's correct.
The second paragraph states that, um, if a substitute teacher who teaches consecut, continuously in excess of 60 consecutive days or in excess of a total of 90 days in one school year, shall hold a license. So, right now, our policy reads that they, that it's 60 consecutive days, so if 61, they have to have a license.
That's correct.
Or if somebody turns around and subs for more than 90 days, they have to have a license. So, we do have some bounds on it currently. Um, now whether those bounds are as tight as they should be, you know, I mean, you know, I, I, I think that we should defer to, to, to administration to ensure that, you know, in, in cases where we have long-term subs, we have the correct people in those positions, you know, for our students. I don't believe that, um, our administration would go, you know, by the book and the policy just to turn around and just fill a position. They're going to do everything they can to ensure that, you know, we have the right people in the right seat.
Absolutely. And again, the, the, the purpose of this policy change, you'll notice what was stricken from your current policy is simply the requirements of us requiring, um, a short-term substitute to have, to hold an, um, associate's degree versus a two-year equivalent after high school. To make our substitute recruitment and pool similar to our neighboring school divisions. Um, I think this language was actually copied from York County, maybe. Um, Kelly's not in here. But that's the purpose of this particular policy change. Now, again, we haven't edited the whole policy. It's just that one sentence that's stricken to change it from
Associates.
Associates, which is a specific degree. Matter of fact, you know, the dual enrollment program that we're going to be talking with you about, um, in, in a subsequent meeting, has a lot of language around a associate's degree versus an equivalent. A lot of, of our students who are interested in, in the, um, dual, uh, the, uh, dual program, dual enrollment program will take certain courses and not actually check all the boxes for the associate's degree, but they'll get 60-plus hours of transferable credit. We have a, we, many of our substitutes have that, or people who are willing to be substitutes for us have that, I should say. But we, our policy hems us up with an actual associate's degree, which I think is, um, counterproductive. And, um, we have found that, um, in our recruitment of trying to hire substitutes, we can't check that box for certain people that would be really good substitutes for us. I mean, they're, um, available and willing and our substitute list is, um, crucial, quite honestly.
I'll, I'll, I'll see if I'm reading this right, but it's just that the last part of the sentence says they have completed two years of post-secondary education or two years of work experience with children. So, they could not have the two years and they had two years of work in, say, a daycare?
Correct. Yep, and that's something that, again, we came, we came from a neighboring school division's policy and then we vetted it with several other school divisions. And they had similar language. One of the things that we have found with, um, recruiting substitutes is there is a, um, an interest among people who have, uh, a draw, a calling to work with children, who become really good substitutes for us. Many of those folks are not holding some associate's degrees, but they have quite a bit of experience in, um, early education centers around the region. So, that is the purpose, to include that language. Well, the only reason for that is, uh, we, we need substitutes. And so, um, if you don't want to waive the second reading, we can always put it on the agenda for, um, September meeting. But then we lose a month of recruiting of substitutes there. My understanding is there is, is a group of people who may be willing to substitute for us. Of course, we go through all the vetting process for, in the hiring, but that we believe would be good substitutes and help us in a day or two, three substitute assignment, um, that don't have associate's degrees. So, that is the, the purpose of this. And waiving the second reading just allows us to get started on that immediately.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you for the discussion. Ms. Carroll, will you please call for the vote?
Mr. Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Dubose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Nay.
Ms. Jones?
Nay.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote passes five to two.
Thank you. Next up is consideration of approval of the 24, 25 Code of Student Conduct. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Carroll, will you please call for the vote?
Mr. Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Dubose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote passes seven zero.
Thank you. We'd like to consideration, consider approving the deputy clerk for the board, Ms. Ashley Ide, for the, who is also our assistant superintendent for instruction and student services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Carroll, will you please call for the vote?
Mr. Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Dubose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote passes seven zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Ide. Uh, next is the consideration of approval of the Proclamation for Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Carroll, will you please call for the vote?
Mr. Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Du, Mr. Dubose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. Last up on our long list this month is the consideration of approval of the Capital Improvement Plan, which we've gone over. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a, just a couple of comments because, um, earlier, things that were on the Capital Improvement Plan early on last year, we got some emails from citizens that are concerned about how I spend my volunteer time as a, I have a 501(c) that's focused wrestling. Some of you have been copied on that email where they think conflict of interest that I vote on anything to do with wrestling and the wrestling room is on there. So, I don't know if anybody on the board had that issue with somebody volunteering their time. When does the, when do athletics officially start for Pecosin?
What grade?
No, what grade level?
Uh, they start eighth grade.
Only the high school has an athletic program. What we're voting on, high school's primary use.
That's correct. Well, the only exception I would say is perhaps the wrestling room, which is of, they, they are, uh, they use that space. That's kind of, uh,
Everybody uses the space.
But everybody uses, yeah.
Parks and Recs and everything else.
Absolutely.
The budget is for the high school athletics.
That's correct.
That's correct.
The budget that we approve in the Capital Improvement Plan is for that.
Absolutely.
Correct. Thank you for the clarity. Okay, anyone else? Ms. Carroll, will you please call for the vote?
Mr. Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Dubose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. Next are our communications and other matters by the school board. We're going to go a little out of order this, um, meeting. So, please just bear with us as we have some new board members. So, everybody gets the idea of how it goes. Next month, we'll do our normal rotation here. So, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and start with Dr. Burbage.
Okay. I have a microphone so everybody can hear.
You're so tall.
I know. It doesn't go. That's fine. All right, I'd like to start with, um, just a couple of things. I attended the Spark 2024 session on Friday. It was amazing. Uh, thank you to all the staff. Ms. Purdy, is she still here? She did an awesome job. I'm sure there were a lot of other people involved. I learned a lot. It was great to meet lots of teachers and staff members, bus drivers. It was very informative. Um, the other thing I wanted to do is thank the, uh, summer maintenance staff that knocked out the amazing list of just jobs that needed to be done around our school. Um, I can't believe how much work you guys got done in such a short amount of time. And so, I'd like to say thank you. Let's see. Uh, also, I'd like to thank all the teachers that worked on the two different curriculums this summer. Uh, that was a lot of work to unpack. But it will benefit our kids immensely and thank you. Uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Dubose?
Um, last week, I had the privilege of attending a board meeting for the Pecosin Education Foundation. Just want to give everybody a quick update about upcoming stuff for, uh, PEF. We have the Run for the Bulls in October. So, if you like to run or walk or just want to give money to the PEF, it's a, it's a good opportunity to do so. And, uh, um, if you own a business and you want to sponsor, or you're an individual and you want to sponsor, uh, they are looking for sponsorships. And every bit of money that comes into the PEF does, uh, go back directly to our students and our teachers. Uh, it doesn't go to anything else. So, uh, it's a great organization and a great, uh, bunch of people that, uh, um, that run that, um, run that foundation. Uh, I want to echo, uh, the thanks, um, that, uh, Dr. Burbage noted, uh, for all the new people, uh, for all the old people that are, um, returning this year. It's going to be, uh, going to be a great year. It's going to be, going to be a great year. Want to also, you know, just remind our community, our parents, and our students, you know, we're here for you as a school board. You know, we are, we're your voice, you know, so if you have concerns or questions, please bring it to our attention. You can bring it to anybody's attention on the board. We'll make sure that we consider those concerns. We're here for you, you know, because ultimately, we're here to ensure our students are educated in what has always been a very first-class community and school system. And my first time saying my thanks, I mentioned this, and I'm going to mention it again this time, it's eighteen weeks till Christmas. So, it's going to be close. So, we're getting close to, close to your first vacation, so enjoy yourself.
Wow, that's going to be tough to follow. Ms. Jones?
Just a big thank you to the Kiwanis for welcoming our new teachers. I heard the Spark event was wonderful, so really excited to get started with the school year. Also wanted to thank, I've just seen some publicity from local businesses who are also supporting our students, our staff in particular, and our teachers, and that goes a long way. So if anyone takes note, I, for one, will be continuing to support anyone even a little more if they are looking out for our teachers. So thank you to everyone throughout the community for getting us off to a good year. To all the teachers for the curriculum writing over the summer, that is the opposite of a summer brain break, so thank you for that time, and to Councilman Fie for the playground inspection as well. I imagine that just is such tremendous expertise, and we are so fortunate that he is able to do that. Welcome to our fellow board members as well, and did want to give a public thank you as well to Mr. Childress and Mr. Ingram for their service on our board, but welcome to our new ones, and looking forward to a great year.
Dr. Bartlett?
Thanks. I'm so new that I feel incompetent to make kudos, you know, about the citywide school system, or the personnel, but I will say this, I want to thank the city council members for voting me in here, a virtually unknown person to most of you, so I really appreciate that, and I will work really hard to be the best board member I can be for the school system here. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Goodell?
I just want to wish the parents and students the best of luck. The school starts on Monday, parents, you can stop trying to plan all the activities in camps, and the time at Water Country, or whatever else you need to do to fill the days, they're going to become the teacher's responsibilities, but have fun at the open houses, drive safe, everyone be aware, and have a great school year. I want to welcome our new school board members. And then I wanted to put a special plug into four Pecosin students that came to a borough's welcome grant that I ran over the summer. They spent three days, went to the Duke Marine Lab, went on some research vessels, learned a lot about coastal resilience. So that's Wyatt Hauser, Pleen Hernandez, Christian Bentley, and Sophia, that they all came and represented Pecosin well, learned a lot. Science teachers, they may have a science fair. I don't think we do school-level ones anymore, there's only a regional one, so I'll be helping them try to develop something to present at the science fair over the course of this school year, so.
Excellent opportunity. Thank you for that.
As another, one of the newly appointed members, I just want to say I'm honored and humbled to join this board, and I'm looking forward to serving this board, our school staff, our students, and our community to the best of my abilities. I also want to echo the congratulations and thanks to everyone who was in the summer programs, anyone who helped make this possible, the teachers working on those summer curriculums, also, again, the operations and maintenance staff for going to overdrive during the summer and knocking out that stuff, and our HR team for fully staffing our schools and what they do.
And I guess that's my turn. I echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. Welcome, Dr. Bartlett and Mr. Maxwell. Also, would like to welcome Ms. Winchester. Congratulations, and welcome Ms. Ide and Mr. Roberts to their new roles. Lots of moving around, but it's great to see professional growth this way. This is really the way it should be, I think, and I think it's a testament to what we do here, and I think it's a testament to what we provide. So I couldn't be prouder of, you know, what we've developed, and I want to say congratulations and thank you for that. You know, thank you, of course, to the teachers and the curriculum build, and we will recognize our former board members at a future meeting as well, but appreciate all the support and getting everybody ready to go back to school a week early.
Mr. Tullott?
The liability or benefit of going last is everything has been said that can be said, so I echo the comments from our board. I do want to formally welcome our two new board members. After a very thorough vetting process to select the right ones, I think city council did an extraordinary job here. I've read both of our new members' resumes, and they're impressive. I'm very much looking forward to working with Dr. Bartlett and Mr. Maxwell as our new members of the board, so welcome. As well, I would be remiss if I didn't thank, again, Kelly Purdy and her team for an incredible day of learning and collaboration and fun at Spark Day. So it was a wonderful way to start the school year, with our new and returning staff, and we're ready for 180 days of incredible education and growth in Pecosin schools, so thank you all, and go Bulls.
Is there any other material for board review, Ms. Carroll?
No, no more material.
Thank you. Then we will stand adjourned. Thank you.